Home shelter, the homeless. I pray, oh God, for the administration of our city, each worker that gives their best every day. Forgive us of our sins, Lord, where we have failed you, and go with us and guide us through this meeting. In Christ's holy name I do pray. Amen.
If you'll join me, face the flag and repeat the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, clerk, please.
Councilor.
President.
Councilor Everston.
Here.
Councilor Abington.
President.
Councilor Corwin.
Present.
Councilor Wood.
Present.
Councilor Malik.
Here.
Tomorrow we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference from March 12th and March 13th. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or attendance guests? None? Madam Mayor, do you have any awards or recognitions or attendance guests you'd like to?
Uh, I don't have any of those today. I do have two other, two appointments I'd like to...
Are they here?
Yes, sir.
They are?
Yes, sir, if it's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, um...
May I, we can... Yes, ma'am.
I believe this is probably the last item on the clerk's report. If you all will let me bring them up now, then I can get back to work. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Appointments to be made in a couple of weeks are the following. Ms. LaShawn Wheeler, will you please come up, Ms. Wheeler? Ms. Wheeler is, I'm appointing her as customer service superintendent for the water and sewer department, and she'll just come up and introduce herself, and Mrs. Fetterston will come with her, since she made the recommendation. Okay. Ms. Wheeler?
Hello. How are you?
Good. All right, how are you? Just want to introduce yourself.
Yes. My name is LaShawn Wheeler. I'm currently chief administrative manager of customer service, and I want to thank Barbara for acknowledging me and trusting in me to be superintendent of customer service. I want to thank this, Mayor Tyler, Mayor Tyler, for agreeing with Barbara and appointing me, and for you to acknowledge me and make it happen.
That's your question?
Yeah. It's good to see you and have you recommended for this position. You've been with the city how long? I saw your resume, but I forgot.
Uh, since 2010.
2010?
Seventeen years. Be eighteen years this year.
Oh, 2010 or 2000?
Oh, 2010. 2010. And this is 2018, right?
I just want to check. I mean, you're always moving so fast forward, you know, for those who must have checked.
Is it seven years? It's seven years. I'm sorry, not seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. So tell me, how familiar are you with this GSI?
It's not G.I.S.
That's the next guy.
That's the next one.
Oh, water.
This is water and sewer.
That's right. You, you, it's almost just a level up from where you are now, right?
Yes.
Okay. You feel comfortable?
Very. Very confident, very comfortable.
You total familiar with the whole apparatus of the department?
Very.
That's confident.
Are there, are there things you look forward to in the new position? Things that you've seen from your experience in your current position that you kind of look forward to being in the new position, to be able to implement? Any changes or sort of different approach that you think you might be interested in bringing to the table?
Absolutely. I've discussed, and I see a lot of areas that need improvement. Uh, I think I have a great staff already, and I think that with people that we have, with just a little encouragement, a little different approach to things, we can make it happen.
Just kind of a little bit of management style change?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
We get a lot of inquiries out of the water and sewer departments. How do you view responding to our citizens when they complain? What's your approach to that?
I think my approach would be to respond accordingly. It just depends on what the inquiry is.
Well, my water be too high.
That's a good one.
Well, that's not an inquiry.
That's a statement, huh?
That's a statement. That's an opinion.
We talked about in our committee meeting just a minute ago, friendliness, citizen friendliness, you know, residents friendliness. Is that, is that, I mean, I'm not saying it's not, but is that sort of the culture that, that needs to be more down, down there?
I think that our staff is, is very friendly. I think the perception of a lot of people, when they call in, they're already angry. And I think that I definitely can work on the response from my staff to kind of meet and marry the situation versus reacting as much, but I'm, we're definitely working on that. Definitely working on that.
And that's, 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 I mean, you know, we just have to, we, and you said it, when they call that they're already frustrated, angry, they want to, they want to vent, and we just have to be prepared to...
Absolutely.
Calm them down, to take, to take control of the, of the situation.
And I have things in place already that I can't wait to work on, so...
Well, thank you for accepting the mayor's appointment. I think you'll do well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate anyone willing to be sort of like, you know, in a position of, because us on council, we're sort of in a front-facing position, you know? We're in a position where we interact with citizens a lot, you know? And I know that it's not always easy, you know, particularly in government, not just City of Shreveport, but other governments. You know, sometimes you have limited resources, and a lot of citizens who you would really like to be able to make all of them happy if possible, but it's not always the easiest thing to do. So I know that that can be, you know, a situation that can take a toll on people.
Absolutely.
And so I think your suggestion of, you know, a management style that is encouraging and reminds people that we are there to take care of great citizens and a great city, and you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity to help people, even on those days when it doesn't necessarily feel like that. I think that's, that's an important aspect. So I appreciate hearing you say that and look forward to your success.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say, I guess, picking back on what Councilor Everston just said, you know, sometimes, a lot of times, we get phone calls just as councilmen, ninety percent of them, they're not calling us to telephone, "Thank you for the great job that you're doing."
I'm getting all those.
You get all those.
I get all those. You must be getting different calls.
No, I'm getting your calls.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to say, just be encouraged, and I'm, I read the resume, and I'm glad Barbara had confidence in you to select you for the position. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. And by the way, we, we have, just so council will know, all of the appointments that we make, we really meet with them personally to talk about a lot of the issues. Uh, you know, I didn't know y'all were getting blamed. I thought the mayor got all the blame for everything in the city. But you know, I do, I do meet with them. I also talk with them about trying to improve whatever we're doing, look at ways, listen to the employees, and certainly listen to citizens, even if sometimes they seem unreasonable. So, we, we meet with and we screen before we bring these to city council members. Just, I want you to know that we've talked about all of the things that you alluded to today, and, you know, we're going to see where it goes. But I feel like she's a great appointment. In fact, she's already doing the job. She just, she hasn't been getting paid for it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
All right, our next appointment is, of course, Mr. Dylan Thomas, Mr. James Dylan Thomas, and we are going to appoint him today to be our new GSI administrator. He, by the way, is already doing the job. He's doing two jobs right now, and, and he's not getting paid. So I do need to make that appointment. This one is very critical and very crucial to what's going on with us, with the city, throughout the city, but particularly at, for the upcoming census. But Dylan has done a great job, and he is working diligently and hard every day, trying to keep us straight with all the streets and all the different kinds of things that we have to deal with, with maps and so forth. So, Mr. Thomas, will you introduce yourself?
I'm Dylan Thomas. I've been the GSI analyst here at the city engineering department for the past five years. I just want to thank Mr. Chairman, members of the council for considering this appointment, and also want to thank Mayor Tyler and Mr. Crawford for the appointment as well. I really appreciate it. I also appreciate Patrick's support and the entire engineering department's support as well, so...
Okay.
Any questions?
Let me ask first, Mr. ... No, go ahead. Okay. How long has this position been in vacant, ma'am?
How long has it been?
About a year.
About a year?
About a year?
Okay.
And as an analyst, you, you work closely with the administrator as relates to the mapping of the, so you're very familiar with this?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. What do you, what do you see, and I, and I, we've seen, you've got all kind of web now that we can go and look at stuff. What do you see as the challenges in, in the structure of this city?
As far as GSI goes, I'm making it more user-friendly to, for all of our employees to, you know, to view the water and sewer and everything, you know, the GSI system as far as maps go.
Okay. I would, I would add, you know, one of the reasons that I got involved in sort of the infrastructure committee and have taken such an interest in, in infrastructure is, is GSI. I mean, I think it is such a important, important way of organizing our information so that we can get a handle on the, you know, we have a vast responsibility and set of liabilities in infrastructure. I mean, everyone, every city does. I mean, it's hard to manage. And for years and years and years, cities across this country, you know, took on and built infrastructure based on an assumption that there would be continued forever growth. And there's not, you know? Like, we're at a point where small and medium-sized cities across this country have lost population to major, major metropolitan areas that have multiple, you know, large cities in, in one area. And so it's given us some new challenges, and during a time when people want more for less, more bang for their buck at every instance, and there's no better way to do that than being organized and knowing where your money makes the biggest impact, and there's no easier way to do that than through GSI. So I'm really glad to see you being moved into this position on a permanent way. I know you've been doing great work in the, in the interim since Jennifer left, and I appreciate the, the, you know, choice to, to re, to fill that position and move him into that role. I think that's an appropriate use of city resources, and I can tell you, if we came upon a windfall, I would throw a lot of extra money at GSI because I do think that it really helps us find efficiencies and, and really is a good use of our resources. So, thank you for keeping up the good work, and sorry if I bug people a lot with like, where's this line over that line, and where are they on this and that? But it's helpful for me to know when I'm talking to constituents about what to look for in coming years and why our decisions were made the way they were. It's just really beneficial to have that kind of information when you're having to make policy choices. So, thank you.
I'm going to give Jeff a plug, even though he's not being hired, but it was Jeff Everston who, who introduced me, even before I was sworn in, to the GSI system and gave me my first tutorial. And I never thanked you for that.
Happy to.
Because, I mean, he's, he's on top, he's, he's, he's very astute to, to the apparatuses that are available to councilmen to research information, and I think he just know how live yours, I'm sure, as well that you're doing a great job in this capacity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not?
Saying none.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications from the mayor?
No, sir, thank you.
Does any council member have any questions or concerns related to property standards? Saying none. We'll probably catch you afterwards. Mr. Green? Thank you. Mr. Swinger, you have a master plan committed report tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah? We're going to be a budget to actual financial report tomorrow. Mr. Cross?
Yes.
And adding, we're not to adding legislation. Will it be in the legislation to be added tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman, you have a public hearing tomorrow, too, under Part Six.
Let's have a hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Chairman, we're under consent agenda legislation. Resolutions not, are to be adopted tomorrow. Resolution thirty-six rejects bids received by IFB number eighteen dash zero-one-two Dock Pond Aeration Foundations. The budget for that was fifty-five thousand, and it came in at one hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred. Resolution thirty-eight authorizes Justin Woodson and Robert Woodson at ninety-seven sixty-six Wallace Lake Road to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Resolution thirty-nine authorizes Lake Shreve Estates water system, represented by Mr. Dennis Wilson, president, to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Resolution forty accepts a dedication for Woodsong Lane right-of-way in Providence Phase Two, Unit H One. Resolution forty-one authorizing the mayor to execute an act of release of a portion of the twenty-foot-wide utility servitude in Burgundy Ridge subdivision, Unit Number Five, in Section fifteen, T sixteen North, R fourteen.
Okay. Any discussion? Saying Jenkins?
Always have this... Okay, question number one. So, I heard about the SPAR thing. How come the SPAR rejecting bids is not on the agenda?
What?
Okay, okay. That's question number one. Number two, resolution thirty-eight, are we doing a water and sewer hookup to mobile homes?
I'm not sure what it is. We can check on that.
Is that a mobile home?
I just know it's a property.
It suggests as part of it that it is a mobile home. Now, I'm, I mean, I'm not...
And I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, I don't know how often we've done that in the past, is my point. So, as long as everybody's aware of it, great, but if we need to discuss that, I'd be happy to...
I'm not aware of it, and we will, we will visit that.
And I'm not saying it's wrong, I just know we, I don't recall ever doing a connection.
No.
Okay, so...
We'll check on that.
Um, I think that's the only two I have. Well, I was a little confused on why, one of those is in Flurries District, one's in Corvins.
I thought, I thought both of those were in Mr. Flurries District.
Forty-nine and the other side...
Burgundy Ridge, Mayor.
That is in your district.
That's what I'm saying. Burgundy Ridge, I would think, is in Flurries, but I would think the Lake Shreve Estates is in...
It's not.
It isn't?
That's still...
But Burgundy Ridge subdivision is in...
Okay, so, that's...
Yeah. On the east side of forty-nine.
Is that resolution forty-one? Is that?
Forty-one should be Councilman Flurries.
Should be Councilman Flurries. If it's in Burgundy Ridge subdivision.
Yep. I wonder was the old map?
Let's just check. Patrick, let's just check.
I don't think Burgundy Ridge was ever in, in anybody on the east council. That's as far south as you can go.
Yeah, that, that should be Councilman Flurries when I saw it. I didn't want to see it.
Yeah. We can fix it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's all I got.
Okay. All the questions, and in order, Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage are, which will require only one reading. Resolution thirty-three authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Red River Employees Federal Credit Union. Resolution thirty-four adopts the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor Office of the State of Louisiana. And resolution thirty-six allocating funds to specific non-for-profit, non-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted and other charges in the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Anybody has any questions on thirty-six?
Councilman Crawford, I think? Yes, sir, I do, and I, and I want to thank Justice for conducting a very positive meeting. I think, I think those in attendance was, was pleased how the discussion went forward. we did discuss each and every application that came before us. One of the, one of the organizations that came before us is the Monmouth King Community Development Corporation, which tomorrow I'm going to offer an amendment to, to allocate them five thousand dollars, and it's going to be for this reason. And I know, just like some of the others, they are, they are frequent annual requests. Monmouth King, and we had a meeting up there last week, Mayor.
Yes.
Very good meeting as well, and the residents there brought forward a lot of questions, and, and the questions that they brought forward was not really questions that should have been, well, should have been addressed or fixed years ago. Forty years ago, they was annexed into the city, and a lot of the things that, that are, that the city is accustomed to have not yet been provided them. They have the worst rates, and I think the, the system that we just talked, spoke over with, with show that. And a lot of the things that, that, that are concerning is, it's legitimate, but at the same time, something that we just cannot solve overnight. I think the mayor said, "I can't solve it in three and a half years. Y'all give me, give us more time, I can help move forward." But the, but the reason that I'm saying that I think we need to fund MLK CDC again is because they are the only entity that has twelve thousand-plus residents that lives in that community. It's a very impoverished community, and they are doing a lot of, a lot of positive work up there. They are engaged, which this funding would not go toward, building an office space. They are now working out of a, a private person office space. But, but I think they meet much, they, they do special things, and I just think that we need to continue to provide them with assistance until, until we can get to the point to where something special could happen. And the fact that, you know, when we, when we do appropriations, we want to, we want to try to ensure that city, city, city resources reaches general population. And I think when we talk about twelve thousand residents in one contiguous, contiguous community, and, and the only entity that is, is seeking and utilizing city funding other than our various departments should be appreciated in, in helping to move forward some of the, some of the positive initiative that they are, that they are doing up there. So I'm actually, I'll support tomorrow for, for maybe the five thousand.
Thank you, Councilman Crawford. Councilman Jenkins?
Quick question, and I obviously was not there, so this may have been discussed. Do they receive funding from other government bodies?
They, they receive funding from the parish.
There's, and do they also receive funding from community development?
They haven't, to my, to my knowledge, they have not received, they're talking about NIP funding.
I mean, one year they rece, one year they had received like all three, so this is why I'm asking this question.
And I don't think they do, because I mean, ask the living...
Okay, if y'all discussed this already, then...
Well, it, it was asked. I don't think we've received the list of NIP recipients yet, and so, I mean, it was something that was, that was mentioned. I don't believe, and, and again, that's one reason, in the suggestion that the committee made, we, we didn't have quite enough information to say yes or no to some of the applications, so we said yes to funding applications that we felt confident that we wanted to fund at that point in time, and we sort of left some others unspoken. We didn't necessarily, you know, deny them, but we just didn't recommend funding at this point. And, and that, in large part, was because we may have been missing some information that would have been helpful in making that decision, but...
They were awarded S, S, NIP funding for twenty eighteen. They sat out last year. They didn't get any last year, right?
But they're getting some for this year.
For twenty eighteen.
How much did it get?
I believe it's six thousand, but I'll check.
But the funding are directed different? The criteria is different?
Correct. We try to make sure that we're not funding the same thing, that we're not supplanting what you provide to them.
I'll put it, but is, do you know if HRA was a recipient this year?
Um, yes.
Okay. Do you know at what level?
No more than six thousand. Most of the ones that have been getting funded were funded at the maximum amount, which was six thousand dollars.
Got it. And so, those would be like the maximum, like HRA, which is a large neighborhood association in my district, you know, that does a lot of similar work, you know, they receive the maximum amount through NIP, but they don't receive money through civic appropriations. So, I mean, I, I thought it was kind of an either-or kind of thing. It was what we typically tried to do, but, but I don't, I don't know that that's a hard rule anywhere. I think it was just...
Well, I think it was in our original application proposal. I am almost a hundred percent sure it was in there.
I believe there's a requirement to disclose whether funds you're receiving in the, in the application. I think that's right. I think you're right.
I mean, in the application, I haven't looked at it in a while, but the, what I'll call the new application of twenty eleven, or whatever it was.
Twenty thirteen, or whatever it was, yeah.
Whatever it was. There was a clear line in there about other government funding, particularly from other parts of the city of Shreveport.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. There is a, a section that asks them, asks the applicant to disclose it. However, I don't know that there's anything codified that says that we couldn't give to another. I think it was more of a...
I see, I see the distinction.
Information that's provided to help us make that funding determination, you know, but I don't think it's...
I guess...
Now, now, don't just take my memory for it, because I don't always have a crystal-clear memory, but, but yeah, look, you know, if you, if you are concerned about it, certainly I don't mean to...
Well, I just want to make sure we're not funding it through...
Proclude you from looking it up and taking a look. I, my memory is that there isn't, that there is the requirement that they disclose it, but that it's not necessarily something that precludes us from funding somebody. I could be wrong, though, but...
Well, I mean, I would, and I would like to make at least a review to see if they're asking for the same thing for the same project. I mean, I don't know what's on the NIP application, and I don't know what was in the video over here.
We can look at that.
But I, I don't think they should be this, I think that's not really in spirit of this intent if they...
No, but at the same time, again, I'm, I'm, I'm advocating for the fact that reaching, reaching a large contingency, a large, large demographics, and we, we are awarded funding for groups. I mean, I'm looking at the numbers now, and, and only, only one, even if they was combined, if, only one group would be less than what both would be getting together. So I'm just saying that we can, we can certainly qualify that and see where, where the funding was being passed to be utilized, but I'm saying at the same time, the application was for forty thousand. So, I don't know what the application was for, for, for funding out of community development, I'm just saying, we can't do, and our funding, our funding request was almost a million dollars, Mr. Chairman, in that, in that we, we only had a hundred and fifty thousand to, to walk, so we couldn't fund, truly fund anybody. But I'm just saying, but if it's, if it's, if the funding that we providing to entities without, within the city, if they are being utilized in a way where a vast amount of our residents are being, are being benefited, then I think, I think we need to be always considerate of that. But what, there was a time when there was a lot more to be distributed between our nonprofits, but, but we are, we are limited to that, to that extent. So I appreciate your consideration tomorrow as I, as I propose this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? If there are any amendments, we would like to know so we can prepare the amendments before the meeting, just a comment.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We're under introductions of resolutions not to be adopted prior to April the tenth two thousand and eighteen. Resolution forty-two authorizes the mayor to accept a donation from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives. This is for the ATF's... and Firearms and Explosives. This is for the ATF's Explosive Accelerant Detection K-9 Program for the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution 43 authorized the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with Sabine Parish Fire District Number One, Wards Three and Four, for 48 U Scott Air Packs and Masks and 98, 96 U Scott 4500 PSI Cylinders. Resolution 44 authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association. This is to provide $20,000 to SPAR to work in cooperation with University Health for the application of an arthritis-appropriate evidence-based intervention program from May 1st through December 31st of this year. Resolution 45 authorizes the use of certain equipment by North Shreveport Business Association in affiliation with their 2008 Annual Crawfish Boil, with the proceeds going to Police, Fire, and Sheriff's Department projects. Resolution 46 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green for the Great American Cleanup. That'll be April 14th at the Fairgrounds.
Oh, I said it's April 14th.
April 14th. Now, we'll see you there.
Any other questions, Mr. Crawford, if you'd please proceed?
Yes, sir. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to April the 10th, 2018. Ordinance 27 closes and abandons portions of Colley Street, Uranus Avenue, and Jupiter Lane in Manchester Annex Subdivision in Sections 23 T-18 North, R-14 West. Ordinance 28 authorizes and provides for an encroachment on a portion of the McNeil Street right-of-way. And Ordinance 29 amends the 2018 budget for the General Fund. This budget amendment is for city courts to provide their annual allotment of $234,300 for personnel services, materials and supply, and contractual services agreed to in the adopted budget. Ordinance Number 30 is to establish the City of Shreveport's Planning, Zoning, and Development Department, Shreveport PZND Department, along with the accompanying boards and commissions to assume the duties and responsibilities of the Shreveport Metropolitan Commission of Cattle Parish, its staff, and its ZBA as exercised within the city limits of Shreveport, to authorize and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances and other legal documents, and to request the mayor to prepare the necessary organizational chart budgets, and to hire personnel so that the Shreveport PZND Department can begin operating January the 1st, 2019.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In regards to Ordinance 27, I'm gonna ask your support of that as well, closing and abandoning these sections, they're not really streets. I went to the site, actually, the site is pipes. Pipes, you pull the wrecking yard. And I don't know why these deals consider streets. I know MPC, you vetted this application, and it just runs into the wrecking yard, is that correct? And so, I'm just saying, it's not, they're not being utilized, so I just think it's appropriate that they just do a special amount of monitoring.
As long as, I guess we still have access to the appropriate...
There's no streets, there's no utilities that are in that right-of-way.
Oh, that's a...
So there's nothing for us to access.
If we had any need to access any utility point...
We would have done it by now.
Yeah. No, I love it. You know, it's funny, these right-of-way things that are, at some point, they were putting these things on the book, I guess, that they didn't move forward with, because, I mean, we found some that went through the middle of a city park in my district, and there were some that were, I mean, there were never streets there, and you could find some, you know, we found one very senior citizen who maybe remembered at some point that thought there was gonna be a street through some area, you know, but apparently these things, I don't know, at some point, that must have been a practice, but...
Yeah.
True.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, and send all the questions, Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance on Second Reading and Final Passages. This is ordinance Number Nine, amends and reenacts certain provisions of Chapter 26, Division Six, I'm sorry, Article Six, Division Three of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to architectural and engineering services. Ordinance 22 amends the 2018 capital improvements budget. This is a companion to ordinance 23. The capital improvements budget will accept $7,100,861 for three specific funds to improve streets, $3,818,171 to asphalt program, $1,982,690 to concrete panel replacement, and $1.3 million to the Linwood Phase Two. Ordinance 23 is the companion of that, where the $7,100,861 will come out of street special revenue and into the capital project, excepted in ordinance 22. Ordinance 24, to enlarge the city limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport for the Long Lake Estates Unit Number 23 Subdivision Development in Section 28, that's T-16 North, R-13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance 25 amends the 2018 enterprise fund budget. This one is a companion to ordinance 26, too. In ordinance 25, in the enterprise fund budget, this will provide an extra $200,000 from the airport reserves to checkpoint consolidations for the airport. It'll also provide another $1,000 for rehabilitation to N36 Downtown Rotating Beacon. In ordinance 26, that's the capital improvements that will accept these improvements. The two improvements above will be accepted along with another $400,000 grant from Louisiana Transportation and Development for the remediation of taxiway Alpha at Regional.
Councilman Jacob?
Okay, so, talking about ordinance nine, as many of you know, I have met with engineers and architects. They have a proposal for a slight amendment, which we're collectively looking at making that amendment formalized, but I don't think it'll be by tomorrow. So I was just gonna say that, still some internal discussions on that. I'd certainly welcome any input once we have it formalized from anybody, but for you, Mr. Flurry, it's gonna be another day or two, so just figured I might as well let it sit to its end.
Dean Jenkins?
Okay. So, formally, I'm gonna request we postpone this two more weeks. Sorry if I didn't say that. If that was not, it wasn't really just for the sake of discussion. It's my intent tomorrow to offer postponed...
Any other questions? Mr. Thompson at the table, any questions to be removed?
I'm not aware of any to be removed tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have any proper standards appeals until April the 9th?
No ABO, no MPC, no other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No other appeals, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from office and board or committee?
Report here from Public Safety tomorrow at 1:30 with me meeting.
Tomorrow at 1:30. Councilman Thompson?
Oh, I was just gonna say, just under committee reports, we had the meeting today of the Infrastructure Committee to hear new developments in the wireless telecommunications legislation that's still pending and developing. And it was a, it was a good meeting. We kinda got a chance to just kind of hear some general updates from the city attorney's office, and then hear some responses from public comments. You know, roughly, there were, you could kind of categorize it into three areas of concerns that we heard. Some were just over the type of communication and the, or the new type of technology, and what kind of impacts it may have on the general population safety, that kind of thing. Another area of concern was from industry professionals about, you know, sort of, there's specifics of how the regulation would seek to regulate their activity, and how they've, basically, the fees and those kind of things that would be associated with it. And they also did express what sounded like, and somebody correct me if you heard differently, but it sounded like they were pretty pleased with the direction that conversation was starting to move. And then the third set of concerns, or the third concern area that I think would be appropriate to summarize, would be about the point of entry for these applications. You know, currently in the draft, it specifies that it would go into the MPC, and there was some concern about that being the appropriate place. So those were sort of the general nature of the concerns that were expressed during public comments, and we look forward to getting an updated timeline on the discussion going forward. So there's that committee. I also chaired two other committee meetings this past week. One was in the Master Plan Committee meeting, and I think we'll get a more formal update from the Master Plan Report tomorrow. But I do want to thank everyone who attended that and say that that was the first time that that committee had been able to get a forum in a while. We adjusted the timeframe to the lunch hour, and that seemed to work better for a lot of the attendees. We had previously been trying to meet at 10:00 a.m., and it had been hard to get a forum. So that was successful, and getting everybody together, and I do look forward to kind of using that. You know, I'm term-limited at the end of this year, but where we can use that as an opportunity to kind of bring these three bodies together to kind of discuss some of what's going on, and each of our separate areas of concern, that's what that committee's for, and I'm looking forward to kind of having some discussions there, and to make sure that we don't lose sight of the master plan, you know. I mean, we are doing a lot of a good job implementing it, but it's healthy for us to look at that every now and then and say, "Where are we? What goals do we have?" You know, I think unfortunately, the UDC is such a big thing, kind of hard for people to wrap their brains around, that we sort of just were so focused on that, that we may have dropped some of the other discussion points that are kind of healthy and inspiring and motivating and good things for us to kind of talk about and keep track of. So I hope to do a little bit of that through that committee this year. We had, like I say, members of the parish, the MPC, and city council members were there. Everybody was very helpful, and I want to extend appreciation to everybody for getting off to a good start with that. And then the third meeting was the Riverfront Before Committee, where we discussed the recommendations for funding. As we previously mentioned, we didn't allocate all the funding available to us, so this recommendation is for things that the committee felt pretty confident about wanting to recommend for funding. However, as Councilman Bradford mentioned, he's got an amendment prepared. We're certainly friendly to whatever amendments people want to make, you know, but this was just a recommendation, some guidance from that committee as to what we felt were clear choices that were deserving of some funding, so we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I need to ask Jeff while he's on the floor, does he want to speak on the requests for, I mean, for the parish commission and the city council to meet somehow in an executive way to discuss the MPC?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, thank you for mentioning that. I mean, that is one of the things that we discussed in the Master Plan Committee, was, you know, do we need sort of a working group, you know, that might be city-parish working group, that can kind of help talk through some of these stickier issues that are very practical and specific about how, you know, with relation to funding the MPC, you know, it's something that obviously we've seen discussions go back and forth, and this body may talk about something, and then the parish commission may talk about something, but those two conversations aren't necessarily happening in unison, so sometimes points are missed, or we don't always hear what the other body is saying, you know, fully, and so it's, that was a suggestion that we made, of maybe we can look to do that, and we were talking about potentially putting that on the agenda, just to ask for the creation of that, or however it needs to be done, at the Intergovernmental Committee meeting. So maybe we set up a group, like a working group of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Let me suggest, because I think the school board is gonna report that equation, can we request that the city attorney to see if there's a way that such a meeting could be held without it being a public meeting?
Well, I mean, I certainly don't have apprehension about it being a public meeting. I mean, I think it's...
No?
No, I think it's good that we keep it a public meeting if we're gonna be discussing those type of things. I just think that we should be really clear about where we are with it, and, you know, let people know it's a work in progress kind of thing, you know. I mean, I think as long as we're not, you know, it's, like, you know, when we have these meetings, like a committee meeting, where you're really working through the points of a piece of policy a little bit more, you're clear about that in your agenda, and I think it makes it easier for the public to understand where you are in that discussion, as opposed to, like, if something is on our agenda, then it looks like we're about to make a decision on it, you know? So, so we want to be clear on the fact that this would be a working group, this would be something that's at early stages of conversation. But, but again, open a suggestion, and I think this is something that I think is appropriate to talk about during the Intergovernmental Committee meeting. And even though it may not be something that, that long run includes the school board, that is still a good gathering of, you know, all of those relevant bodies, so that was sort of what I thought would be a good time for us to discuss it.
Is that meeting before we meet again?
Mm-hmm.
The Intergovernmental Meeting?
Yeah, it is. It's before the next meeting that we discuss, I believe. And there was some more discussion on that during the Master Plan Committee meeting, and we'll get some minutes out to everybody, just so everybody can see the totality of that discussion.
Is that it, Councilman Elvin?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Quick conversation. Councilman Jenkins?
So, but Jeff, is there a reason why we don't want to use just the existing Master Plan Committee?
I mean, that could be fine. I think there was just some sort of, this wasn't really my, I'm trying to answer a question that wasn't really my suggestion, as much as I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the reasoning behind why...
I mean, we have this existing committee, why are we gonna get another committee?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was meaning that this would be a group that, like, perhaps it's a subcommittee of the Master Plan. I mean, I think it's meaning that this would be a group that's strictly talking about the funding issue, whereas the Master Plan Committee has a variety of other issues that they're interested in entertaining and moving forward.
I got you. So it could be just an absolute meeting to discuss funding for the MPC, vis-a-vis the two...
I think, am I remembering that correctly?
The idea was it'd be the full body, of both, of both government entities.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's entirely, my point is, we better make sure what we're asking for here, because I'm a little confused.
Absolutely.
That was the, that was the, that was the, that was the challenge of both, the four bodies, of both, of both bodies. Because, I mean, you know, we keep, both bodies keep beating up on the MPC, and we need to come to some consensus on how we want to move, move forward.
Well, certainly, I think maybe I had a slightly different understanding, but I will be glad to reach out to Councilman Bradford after the meeting, and then follow up with others who were in the meeting the other day, so we can get a good, clear understanding of what everybody's looking to accomplish here.
I'm not trying to be quick, I was like, we got things in place, but if we got different ideas. Okay, number two. Jackie, did you send out a public notification for a public safety meeting?
I sure did.
Okay. I can't find it in mine, so can you send me a copy? I may not be on that public safety.
Oh, we might sure you are.
It came out a long time ago, and that's maybe why I couldn't find it. Thank you. And then, request to suspend the rules. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. What I'd like to do is bring up public comments. Apparently, somebody put their public comments in too late, and we missed it. I mean, I got them after, it was on the agenda, we were past it, but they are agenda items, so the request is that we allow this gentleman a chance to speak. Okay, Mr. Weiner?
Mr. Chairman, I suppose that was without objection?
Without objection.
Well, the record is without.
Sounded like a correction to me.
But I really should blame the clerk, because he gave it to me too late. Now, had he been on his game, I'd have had this in plenty of time, I wouldn't have had it.
He was working on his report.
He was working on his report. He was eagerly listening to the mayor give his report at that moment in time.
I was waiting until we got my report to give it to you.
Okay, Mr. Renfey Wood, say your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Bill Weiner, Number Two, Longleaf Lane, a retired architect planner. I want to talk to you about two items on the agenda for tomorrow that I think are so critical, because what's being proposed goes against good government and good planning for future generations. Separating the MPC from city and parish, only word I can think of is stupid. Separating the MPC from city and parish, only word I can think of is stupid. Planning is about the future, intergenerational. Planning is about what's happening beyond your boundaries, so you have some control, or at least know what's happening. If anything, the planning commission should be expanded from beyond the five mile boundary to the parish boundaries. You could have districts within that, from the five mile to the border, under one set of rules, and the five mile around it, another set of rule, and in the city, another set of rule. There are a lot of things to be worked out, who pays for what, who gets to vote, et cetera. The other thing is similar. It deals with the selection of architects and engineers. I haven't seen what's going to be proposed, but I think I know what it is, and it doesn't make sense. I was on the State Architectural Board, LAA, when we went to Governor Edwards and said, you cannot continue giving these jobs to your buddies. The work was not good. Things, change orders were being done without paperwork, and he said by executive orders, he would change them. Well, he didn't. We had the board set up, like you're talking about, and then he just overrode everything. And then we went to the legislature, and we got it passed right. It's been in effect for years. It works. It's a perfect model for Shreveport to adapt. Now, I, I believe they're talking about putting the architects, the engineers, and the interior designers under one board. That makes no sense. If we're going to do professional selection that way, I want your selection of attorneys that you need to help you with special things to have to go through that same selection committee with an architect, an interior designer, and an engineer voting on the attorneys. You must have qualified people in each profession making the decisions on the selection for the work. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
And, uh, yes, Mr. Bradford. Let me, let me, I have some remarks I want to make. But before I make my remarks, I want to ask if Mr. Sweeney, who was in the Master Plan Committee Meeting, want to speak on that agenda item I spoke of. Do you feel comfortable saying anything about that?
For introduction?
No, 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 no. This is about the unified meeting of both bodies.
Sure. At the end of our Master Plan Committee, and I was going to mention this tomorrow, but I can go ahead and mention now, I, I proposed to all the representatives that were present that day that, that it seemed appropriate, and the timing was right, for us to have a united meeting between both the parish commission and the city council. Whatever structure that takes is up to y'all as to how you want to do that. But I felt like, you know, the budget process, as Brian will contend to, begins June. And if you wait until June, you're really too late, because the process starts going, and we have to submit our budget by the first part of August. Well, we really need a serious and in-depth conversation between the two bodies about how that funding of the MPC should be handled going forward. You know, we did the study. The city council embraced that study, and it was done objectively. The parish commission didn't like the study, didn't like the outcome of it. So somewhere in the middle, there must be some, I would call, common ground to find resolution to how we fund that, the agency that is called the MPC. How we do it, and the fashion we do it, that's up to you guys. But what I suggested, and I've had, I've talked with other elected officials that have encouraged me and urged me to do something sooner than later, because I think if we can come to some type of resolution, let's say, by, I'd just say have a meeting no later than May, or possibly in April, where we could actually get together and talk about that issue, then we can lay the foundation to how we will build the budget going forward, when I have to submit it to the CAO in August. So I didn't want to wait to the last minute. I think that's been part of our problem. We wait till the time of the budget, sometimes as late as getting into November, and here we go into the same conversation we had the year before. And I'm just trying to think ahead, plan ahead, and try to get everyone at the table to have a frank conversation. I mean, that's what we need, and I feel like out of that, we can find resolution.
And I, and I agree that that need to happen, and how we fashion it to happen is the, is the challenge. And, and I thought maybe if somehow, some, some scenario were to be developed where there's an executive meeting of both bodies collectively could be without, because I don't think the public need to be there, because I think some things that may need to be said won't be said. But I think we need to, we need to be open and honest and candid about how we want to treat the MPC. Because, I mean, I think, again, whether it's good, bad, indifferent, you've gotten a lot of attention, and I think that's not healthy if we're going to, if we're going to move forward.
Absolutely. And I leave that to the city attorney and his staff to determine what is allowable in an executive session. I know that they understand what is and is not. There's certain rules we have to follow very carefully, and what portion has to be a public input element to it as well. So, but I agree. It's, there's, the time is now, and why delay any longer?
See, my, and my proposal was, was without the, even the board of the MPC present, just those elected bodies.
And that's fine. And that's fine. I mean, if you, if you want to have just a conversation between the two bodies and nobody else, that's fine.
Well, we'll see how we can work that out. I hope we can, but if not, we have to go public, okay?
I, I agree. All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
You're more than welcome.
So, Mr. Chairman, my, my comments would be this. Before I left home this morning, or this afternoon, coming to this meeting, on the 12 o'clock news, the Louisiana Legislature got heated. I don't know if anybody saw that. Racial, racial implications was levied against, against members of that body. And it, and it was levied in a, in a way that those state representatives was, was really, was really, in fact, it was going to come to some, some physical stuff. But we got a, we got a, and I've said this before, we got a, a bond renewal continuation election coming up in April. There's a site called Real Shreveport that is, that is, that is hammering us, Mayor. Now, I know you don't do social media, but social media is, is the new wave of communicating, okay? And it's a lot of erroneous and fake information that's being proposed. Matter of fact, I call them out on it. I call it fake news. And...
I've heard that term before.
But, 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 there was, there was a wise man that once said that the only way that fake news, I'm going to use, I'm going to paraphrase it, or false information could prevail is that the truth does not come to the light. If, if, if we got people out there that's hammering away at misguided information in regards to this council, they said that this council adopted a budget that was, that was illegitimate. Okay? The mayor proposed that the council adopted it, and that, and that we are not being worthy of this tax renewal, because we have not been honest and forthcoming with the people, which is, again, very, 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 very false. Now, my issue is this, colleagues, this is for my colleagues. Now, I'm, let me, let me go back and say, we had a meeting in MLK. This is, this is how serious this thing is. We had a meeting in MLK. I just told you a minute ago that, that the MLK streets are the worst streets in the city. If you don't believe me, wait till it rains, and let's go up there. Flooding in, in University Park is a common occurrence. And the reason is, and I'm not even talking about the asphalt over these streets. I'm talking about concrete streets that are buckling, and it's holding water and creating more buckling, because when this, when that community was in, was in annex to the city, those streets, at least the concrete street, was built on, on parish standards. There's no drainage. You go, you go up and down Kemp Lane, Audrey Lane, East West Boulevard, there are no drainage. Water just runway runs. There's no, there's no drainage system. And what has happened over the last 40 years was, is that those streets are now in such horrible condition that residents are complaining. They came to the meeting and started complaining, and, and to repair or to replenish a, a concrete street, I think even, because you asked, you asked the engineer between, between Hillary Huckabee and David Rains. Now, between Hillary Huckabee and, and MLK, that, that, that maybe six block stretch to, to, to take, to re-concrete that street would be a million dollars. That was estimate, about a million dollars. That's just one, that's just one street. And, and this is where I'm going. And, and some residents of MLK is questioning whether or not they support a tax renewal that will give additional funding to streets. Now, they think they got bad streets now. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we eliminate the special, the street revenue fund, what would happen?
We would have any street.
We wouldn't have any street money.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, we'll do money, but...
What I'm, what I'm going to request, in the most respectful way, is that this council go on record as supporting all six proposals on this vote renewal continuation. I think the mayor's been out there working, beating the streets, her and her, her and her staff administration. But, but the council have not, have not chimed in on this. And I think it's, I think, it don't have to be today, it don't have to be tomorrow, but I think between now and early voting, this council needs to be on record of supporting this project. It's our responsibility as leaders, because if we, if this fails, like, like those that are, those forces that are out there perpetrating these untruths, wanting it to do, I see it akin to sabotaging this city. It, it'll put us in a climate, in a situation where we, it'll take us years to recover. We have been, we have been, this has been a continuation. It's almost been like an automatic renewal for the last, every five years. And now all of a sudden, we get all of this resistance. We get all this negative feedback, and, and residents are hearing this stuff, but they're not hearing the alternative, and that is the truth. Now, again, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to know that, that we will do this city repable harm, irrepable harm, if this is not passed, and it's in total, in this totality, so we can continue to provide the very basic services that these proposals propose. How we do it, and I think we need to do more than just from this podium. I think we need to have a press conference, if we will, and say, we collectively support, endorse, and ask that you would join us in voting yes for all six propositions on April 28th. I think that's important that we do that. And I'm going to do everything I can in my district and throughout the entities and the social media that I can control to counter what's going on. And I'm going back to what I said earlier, the state legislature, this, this morning, they said it took them 10 days to get this ballot underway. And this Real Shreveport site, and, and I ain't going to apologize for what I'm going to say, and this is Willie Bradford saying this, this Real Shreveport site, in my opinion, is akin to saying, we want to, the Real Shreveport is what it was 40 years ago. This, this is a new Shreveport. And this Shreveport that we have now is, has become diversified in a sense that if it goes back to the, to the Shreveport, that they are remembering that was from 40 years ago. And they continue to, 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 to try to impede and create chaos in this city that is transitioning into a majority of black city. And I think that's part of the motivation of why they want to kill everything that's going on that's positive for this city. Time and time again, we hear all negative. Nothing from that site is positive about what we can do to improve this city. Everything is negative. And I'm saying, somewhere, somebody got to say, what do you propose that we can do to make this city a better place to live, to make this city a better place that we can raise our families and work? We cannot let this continue to go unchecked from this body. Now, again, they were successful in defeating two previous bond proposals for the Kettle Parish School Board and for the Kettle Commission. This is different, because we are talking about, basic services would have to be eliminated or compromised if we do not defend ourselves as a city, as city government, to make sure that our citizens are educated and informed about what it is that this tax proposals is about and what it would do for our future. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Bradford. Well, I mean, I'll make a comment.
Yeah, you got my need to see you on, yes, sir.
I'm on there. Okay. Hey, listen, that was a discussion amongst council members, and I certainly, I don't disagree with them. I hear you that maybe we need to do a press conference, or, you know, I would say legislatively, if we've got a unanimous thing to put something on the ballot, that is tacitly showing our support. But I acknowledge that that may not be strong enough, given where we are today. So I don't, I'm not opposed to somebody proposing a resolution for tomorrow and adding it to the agenda that says it's essentially what you say. I don't think that's a terrible idea. I hope the media would pick that up in the intent in which it was given. And I certainly would support that, if that's your proposal. Secondly, you know, we could do something like that on April 10th as well. Wouldn't go before early voting, but to be honest, I'm not sure that's that impactful. But I'm happy to support either one of those things. I would say the fact that we voted unanimously to put it on the agenda and didn't really have any debate is indicative of one thing, but it may not be strong. Okay. My other comment is a little bit related to Willie Bradford's personal comments. I really don't think this is a black and white issue at all. I don't, I don't think certain parts of this district, of the city are afforded in certain, based on their color. I think those people that are responsible think about everything costs money, services cost money, and this is how we pay for the services that our citizens enjoy. I tell you, the people in my district appreciate police protection as much as any section of this city, and taking money away from the police department affects us all, or takes away money from streets. They want good streets as well. I think it's myopic, frankly, of us even try to go there, that it's a black-white issue. That's my opinion. I have plenty of people in my district that support this. You know, I don't necessarily even think that this website is focused on dividing us either. That being said, I think we need to focus on the merits of these tax proposals and what those, what benefits those bring to the citizens of our city. And that should be enough for them to stand on their own, without getting in these other issues. Because the risk getting in all that other stuff is backlash that's beyond the scope of this real discussion. The issues, the tax proposals stand on their own merits, and we need to focus on that. Brian's got some good speaking points about, people noticed, we've probably rolled off more milledges than we're asking to maintain, certainly over the last six years, if not over the last three years. And so, over the last six years, for sure, I don't know, but not, maybe not over the last three years. So my point is, that should be enough to point out that this is not a frivolous, and I really think we need to focus on that aspect of this. That's my opinion only.
Well, another thing, another thing I would add, that I think, I know a lot of my constituents appreciate, and I appreciate the opportunity. I know the administration has had a chance to give a few presentations, of which I've been able to attend in my district in the last week or so, and, as well as other meetings where I've heard from constituents in the last week. You know, one of the things I think that has come out of those, as I'm listening to what their reaction is to the presentation and those kind of things, is that this is their chance to tell us what's important to them. This is the, this is the voters' opportunity to tell us what matters to them. opportunity to tell us what matters to them. And so, you know, I think that regardless of what somebody else may want or not want, you know, somebody in the public has the right to not prioritize streets if they don't want, you know, but I, I think that there are a lot of constituents who do prioritize streets, and who would like to see those funded, you know, so, this is the citizens' opportunity to tell us precisely how to spend this money, because it is on a ballot, we will spend it as the ballot says we are to spend it. And so, um, you know, I would hope that the merits of this, these renewals can focus on the merits of what they're doing, so that we can hear from the voters what they want, as opposed to whether or not we should have an election, or whether or not renewal means renewal, or something else, you know, I mean, these, these type of discussions that I'm hearing a lot on social media, really aren't talking about the merits of the actual proposals before us, and I would hope that that can be more the discussion, is, you know, do, do we feel like this is the time to eliminate funding for police officers after 10:00 PM? I mean, that doesn't seem reasonable to me, you know, but, but it is, you know, it is healthy to have a public discussion, it is healthy to let voters tell us what matters to them, it is a good thing, you know, but I do hope that we can talk about the merits of these proposals, more than we can talk about the semantics of, you know, whatever it is.
And, and, and those are my personal comments, and my personal feelings about what's going on in this city. Okay, my head is not in the sand, I wasn't, I wasn't born yesterday. Race matters. Race matters in a lot of scenarios, okay? And I hear racial overtones in this scenario. I hear, I hear, I hear even it being somewhat of a preview of, of, of reflection on the mayor, which is wrong, it doesn't matter who the mayor is, it doesn't matter who the city council is, or, what matters is, is what's, 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 what's in the best interest of this city, the welfare of this city, is what is on the, is what is on the table, and, and I'm saying, I've seen this, I've seen this, I've seen this game played before, I've seen it played in Memphis, I've seen it played in Jackson, Mississippi, I've seen it played in Little Rock, Arkansas, okay? And, and it's not, and it's not, it's not, it's not unrealistic for me to believe that it's not being played in Shreveport, okay? And I'm just saying, that's, now, anybody ask you, the mayor says, Willie Bradford said this, you say, "I said it," okay? In, in that, in that, if we don't be careful as leaders, as the elected leadership of this city, to counter this type of nonsense, that this city is being put to the test right now, in the future of this city, is it going to be dependent upon this, this vote, in a way, not totally, but it's going to get them encouragement, if they succeed in defeating this bond proposal. And, I, again, I ain't going to apologize, I'm just going to say that's how I see it, and I call it the way I see it, and you know that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, was there anything else?
No, no.
Mr. Thompson?
I would have a report, but the mayor stole it.
You stole it from him.
Not over much. We're from, LaShawn Wheeler and Dylan Thomas, and these are current employees who have been promoted, and the mayor has said how important it is to get them on the job and work soon, so.
Thank you for that unique report. And if there's nothing else, that's me, then I don't.